1 o'clock. So I'll call the meeting to order. A special finance committee meeting. Today's August 28th. It's 1 PM and we can go ahead and approve the minutes if you want to. If you all want to look over the minutes there if you all want to make that. You don't have to whisper. Everybody had a chance to.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion's approved to approve the minutes.
Let's vote.
Two people.
Tracy hasn't voted.
Oh, Tracy does? Okay, right. Motion for approve the minutes for July the 30th, 2015.
All in favor?
All in favor. There you go.
You vote as well, you know. You're the coach here in the committee.
The, if I can, what I'd like to do is to have a short recess and have a motion for that and have a short recess and wait for Ms. Copeland to, she signified that she wouldn't be on her way. So can we do that? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion recess.
Second by Councilman Simpson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion adopted. Thank you.
Just don't talk about anything.
Okay. All right. It's 1:09 PM. If you'd like, I'd like to convene the meeting and continue on and we'll go to item number two and let's discuss about the occupational license amendments.
Can you go first?
That's what I'm want to get, see if we can get something lined out.
Okay. I guess this is for Bobby and Keisha's information here. What I'd like to do is kind of reframe the question of what we're trying to decide. In talking about the budget is that, to me, this question is not about the fire department. It's not so much about the budget because the budget is passed. We pass the budget, it's a balanced budget, it's dividend. So that's kind of in the bag. What we're looking about now is the future of our revenue stream and how that's going to affect things over the years. And if we leave the budget as it is now, and Tracy, you correct me if I say anything wrong, please. At the end of this fiscal year, our general fund's going to be about 200, it's about 900,000 now. It would be about $200,000 thereabouts, which is much lower than it's ever been. It's usually around 500,000 or it's up to 900,000. That's what we pay our bills at the end of the year. So I think we need to do something to prevent that from being that low. The other thing we do with the ins and outs from our utility reserve fund, the equipment fund, and if you get to look at all the ins and outs of it, but the net effect is we're going to use about 2.2 million of that utility reserves.
And this is between dividend and indirect cost?
No. No, the dividend is the 1,650,000. That's just, that's the dividend we're paying on the utilities. I'm looking at the 1.3 we're putting in for electrical, the 525,000 for water, 520,000 for sewer, 515,000 for garbage. If you add all that up, it's like 2.8 million.
Okay, I'm just wondering.
That we're taking out of our unrestricted fund. But then at the end of the year, those, some of those funds have a balance.
You're not, Tracy, though, I guess that's what I misunderstood the other night. You're looking at the whole thing.
The total. At the end of the year, you take the 2.8 out and we're putting back in about 500,000 at the end of the year. So if the budget goes as it's crafted, that would reduce our about 2.2 million dollars, which again, we have about 12 million in our reserve. So we use 2 million. It's typically about 10 million. So, but the thing is, if we do nothing, then the next year's budget, we'll be down to $200,000 in our general fund, which is unsustainable. We can't do that again. And we would use another 2 million maybe out of our reserve. So we have to do something to slow that down, as I was talking about the other day. If we wait until the end of next year to see what the removal of the cap does, then that would have no effect on this budget, so we still have to have the 2 million. If we didn't know till the end of next year, then we wouldn't raise the rates till 2017, which means it wouldn't go into effect until January of 2018, which means it'd only affect half of that 2018, '19 budget. So we'd be until 2019 and '20 before we really had an effect. If we don't do anything now and wait until, so that's why I go back to raising the rates, take the cap off. Raise the rates slightly, which would even affect this budget. If we raise our rates, again, if we did the 0.1 percent, we'd be talking about a $600,000 additional fund. So in this year's budget, at the end of the year, the general fund would have about half of that $600,000. So we wouldn't be, so we'd have, so the effect on the general fund wouldn't be as great. And then we would have, again, at this time next year, in the middle, say in more shape of next year when we're doing the budget, we'll see how big our budget is next year. It might be less if we don't have as much capital expenditure. So we can see then if we need to maybe adjust the occupational tax sum or maybe put another type of tax in or something, but we can look at that next year. But if we don't do anything this year, I'm just afraid by the time we see what the effect is on the cap, we're going to have. So that's why I'd like to do something this year. That's why I was proposing the point of proceeding. And Bobby, I know you're okay with approving an extra on the occupational tax. And I guess I'm, I'd still like for us, rather than going to 0.75, I'd like for us to just go a little bit slower on it and see how we are next year. So I'm still in that, if we raise it from 0.5 to 0.6, take the cap off, that's about $600,000 a year. And if we just left that and next year, we still have to look at our, we still would have to look at the, again, the utility reserve and see what our budget looks like next year. But we could make another change next year. So we kind of, you know, I'm halfway between your proposal of just remove the cap and your proposal of removing the 0.25.
Well, what I'm scared is that it definitely is removing the cap. I think everyone is in, can see that it has to happen.
Yeah.
The, really the biggest question is, and I don't see going from 0.5 now to just 0.6. I think if the consensus would be to go to 0.75 or, I'm not saying 0.75, but raise it a quarter percent, which would be 0.75, and go to that point. And then you don't have to go back and revisit this every year. And we don't know what removing the cap off the occupation, we do not know what that is. So wonder if we, and here we are, a what if, and I hate what ifs, but if it doesn't meet the goal of what we may or may not expect. But I don't want to have to go back every year and, of course, this is, this will be the council's choice, but to go back every year and do that, I would hate to have to do that.
Well, and not just, just from a staff point of view, we would have to reach out to these payroll companies.
Again.
And send out letters to all the businesses here and I just.
And I think if the council decided to go to 0.75, take the cap off, then let's revisit everything else. What, you know, whatever else needs to be revisited, then you can revisit that, but you know.
Generally with the police and fire, I think it was the fire commission and then even, I don't know if I can remember where the police part is, but they say the budget for those two raises anywhere between 80% every single year. The only thing that I worry about if we, if we use the utilities, that's fine, but if we keep using the utilities and the general fund keeps going up, are we going to have to raise our electric rates because we don't have enough in the electric, raise our water rates?
But now I'm not opposed to keep using the utility. I mean, I think our forefathers put that there. I think it was designed and was built for that. And I agree with Councilman Simpson and I, and I think Fred, as you have stated, and Councilman Copeland, I think that, I'm not opposed to, how much do we use of it is what we have to determine down the road, is how much we do use of it.
And we also have to hear with our one, we have to keep so much, and I don't know the figures I'll totally have, but we have to keep so much set aside because we told them we would keep so much in our reserves.
In reserve, yeah. For that rainy day or something happens.
I think we have to for our one.
We do.
Yes.
And I think we have about four or five more years on that.
So with occupational, taking the cap off the occupational, we have a budget next year and that has to be done before June.
Yeah, and we'll go back to what Councilman Hagan was saying. If we, if we don't do anything now and we go, I don't think we could go in our unrestricted funds and continue to use that, but then every, the longer we put this off, correct? The longer down the road, that we're not going to see anything.
Well, I understand that, but within five months, you would know, I mean, because you could, that would double, right? You could have a census of what that would bring in.
We start the.
January. When's it start?
It would, if you take the cap off, it started how much is the cap and not the percentage, that would start January 1st of 2016. And it won't, we won't know, we won't have any data for that until November, December. I don't know how many people, as far as occupational taxes go, the wages, we won't know till November, we should see an increase November, December. They have to fall by the end of January and then the net profits on the businesses have until April 15th or 105 days after the fiscal year.
Well, I totally understand what everyone's saying, but what I would not want to do is tax someone once and then have to come right back next year and tax them again. That just, that's not right. And I totally understand where you're coming from, but think about it. Think if you weren't in the position you are right now and you're thinking of someone that makes $15,000, $20,000 and you're going to say, well, we're going to do a small tax. Any tax is not small to them. So a small tax this year and then we may have to tax you again next year. It just, it will not register. It just won't. And I think we're here for the people and we need to make the right decision. So, you know, if it's doing a quarter or if it's doing nothing, I mean, in the meeting, I remember it being said that we could go a year without doing anything.
We could.
And we didn't even talk about the occupational.
But we should.
And I understand that, but can we? Realistically, we can.
Well, this year's budget, you'll get through it. Now March and April next year when we start building the budget.
And let's go back and revisit it next year when we do the budget.
But it's because of the timing that if you wait till next year and then implement a tax, it doesn't go into effect until the following year.
So you're three years out now.
So that's the key to it, is that we have to be thinking ahead and the budgets in general are going to go up. The salaries go up, asphalt goes up. So they're going to be going up and if we wait till next year, because of what I just said, by the time it kicks in and then you, you're two years behind. So I don't think we should do nothing, because if we do nothing, again, at the end of this fiscal year, our general fund will be almost. We just can't, we can't operate that.
Let me encourage you on something is, is people think, well, you're going to have this surplus or extra or whatever words they want to spin on this. You know, and I can meet with you later in great detail, but there are issues that have been let go that has to be rectified for, well, I'm taking one of the sidewalks. Those issues have been let go a long time.
Okay, well, why can't we do this? Because I'm not part of the finance committee, but why can't we? I mean, I don't have a problem doing the right thing. What I have an issue with is not informing the people that it's going to happen to and the people that are actually going to pay it. Why can't we have, why can't we move our council meeting? Why can't we move it to another facility and be brave enough to answer questions that are given to us? Lay out concrete information like Fred, when you got up, that was professional. The only professional thing it wasn't that you were disturbed while you were presenting it. Very, very unsettling. But why can't we have something like that where we provide concrete information to the people in our community and let them see what we're doing? Not that it's throwing out these ideas. Let's not give them ideas. Let's give them concrete information of what we're doing, why we're doing it. We don't have to do a paid advertisement for anything. We can go do a meeting, have a meeting somewhere else and present the information, let him present it and give the numbers. Right now, she doesn't have any information to provide for us, information that he was talking about. Have that information, have those numbers available, because when people see the information and they understand it, this wouldn't be a problem. But because the way we present things is just not kosher.
Well, let me tell you, that's, what you're referring to as paid advertisement, that's not a paid advertisement. That was an information sheet that was put out for the public to see all the information.
I'm just, I'm just, at the bottom of the thing is it paid advertisement, so I'm like.
Legally, you have to put that in there, but it's an information sheet.
So we didn't pay for the advertisement, they just ran it.
If I might, we, I'm a great believer in having everybody know what's going on. I'm a great believer in that. But in this situation, when I sit down for the budget this year, and the only reason that I agreed for that budget was the fact that I always said, if you show me a need, I'll vote for a tax increase. Well, we were shown a need, whether we liked it or not, the fire department. And it was going to cost us 500 and some thousand, 553,000 dollars when it was put to us by staff that this quarter of a percent would cover that and I think we would have a $200,000 extra and then something in that box. That's why I went with this thing to start with and that's why I picked it to, when I voted on the budget, that's what I was thinking. This is what we'd have to do to pay for the bottom. Now, the public is well aware, well aware that we needed a fire department when we didn't have. I don't know how many meetings you could have to let the people know anymore, we had to have a fire department. And when we've done that, now we've got people. And that's where, and that's where, Fred, that's the reason I stuck with my 0.75 is because we were under oppression that that was the least that we could get.
By, we shouldn't be under an oppression. We should be able to read these numbers and make our own decisions. We should understand this budget.
But Fred, I was given numbers at the budget, whether they were, what they were. But I'm addressing the fact that how much, how much more do we, the public knows all of that.
If I can interject on that, on what you're trying to say is, with all the protests and all of this that went on on Facebook and everything, and we're kind of getting off track on this deal here, but what I'm saying is, we had 50 people sit for the city council and we had another 60 downstairs for a video camera and that was allowed for the public to come and view. And we had three or four.
There was no one downstairs.
No one that was downstairs. But I had it set up for another 60 people downstairs. So I'm sorry. But I think that's what you were getting at.
I'm addressing the fact of the need more public input. I don't know how we can get any more than, it's.
Well, here's a question I have on the Keisha. I accept your discussion on public input, but in your mind, what should, what should we do? Do you want to wait to make your decision based on the input from public or do you have an opinion on what we should do? And then explain to the public what you.
I would just like it to be laid out, you know, formally about what the exact need is and not, and leave the 1.25 off, you know, and make sure that we're able to explain what we're going to pay for. We're paying for the fire department. Leave the sidewalks and all that.
But you're not just paying for the fire department.
Well, I'm paying for the fire department. I would stop saying that, but anyway, let me speak, please. What I want, do you want to lay all this out for the public to understand or for you to understand?
For the public.
Okay. So let's hope that is a separate topic. When the council meets though, do you have an opinion on what we should do? Are you still on the, just the cap?
Yeah, that's true.
You're not, you don't want to look at the 0.75? Move it to, from 1.5 to 0.75 and remove the cap?
Well, then.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I'm a county resident, okay? So, and I understand where they're coming from. They say, oh, you know, your tax in the county, but I understand the need for the red department because I brought my kids up there to play ball and they play baseball, they play, they use the swimming pool. So, you know, I'm being thankful for those services. But I think I'm the only one that lives in the county right here. I've always lived in the county, I've never lived in the city.
Well, I'll ask you the same question that you asked Keisha.
What's yours?
Could you, there was a cap, I think, and then would you ask Keisha?
No, I believe we have to raise the occupational tax sum. I mean, I think you should take the cap off, but because, but because we won't know what that does, and that won't have, that'll have no impact on this budget or the next budget or even half of the following budget, that's just, that's too far out. And this, this bit away from us if we don't do something. So we need to raise the occupational tax to a sum. I just think the 0.25, if we're bringing over a million dollars, is more than we need. It will bring in over a million dollars if we go from 0.5 to 0.75.
It'll bring in about 950, for the 0.5, if you leave the cap on, now if you take the cap off, then of course.
That's another 200,000. So it's over a million dollars. So if your philosophy is we need to pay for the fire department, which is 530,000 dollars, if you go from 0.5 to 0.75, you're raising twice as much money as you need.
And the reason for that was, was the, excuse me, the reason for that was with the truck that we put in when we were just starting the budget.
But we won't. But we're not going to need another truck next year. If we raise the occupational tax, that's over a million dollars that they're going to get every year, which we're not going to need another million dollars a year for the fire department because we would have bought all the equipment this year. And if we see next year, we do want to raise, buy another truck, I don't, I don't mind doing it every year. I mean, I understand.
Would you rate, would you raise it 10%, in a year?
Don't know. But next year, if we, if we implement a full-time fire department, if people's insurance rates go down, it might be appropriate to do an insurance premium tax rather than another, change the occupational tax. That's an option as well.
But I don't think.
So you asked me that, that's my question. I hope I answered your question.
But 0.75 brings in more than what we need.
Well, you reduce your.
Depends on what you mean, I mean.
Your need for the utilities.
What was the need for utilities? If we did, if you did the 0.75, now we're talking a million dollars a year. So now, instead of reducing, to use this, this year as an example, instead of reducing the savings by 2.2 million, we reduce it by maybe, you still be using it.
And that's when they brought up rebates to our electric customers or something, or even maybe lowering the rates, but you know, if you're going to raise more money in the general fund and you found that you're needing for the utilities, then you can.
Give a rebate.
Give a rebate to your customers.
Electric customers. But I can't see when you, when you do a, you're a 0.5 and say you want to do a 0.6 or 0.7. I, no, I.
I don't mind doing it every year. I'd rather, I mean, what's, what's the philosophy of only do it, do it once and get it over with? I mean, I, anyway.
Well, you can, you can look at your two school systems and see what that does because they do it 4% of a year and it's just, but that's in the home of the topic.
I mean, it's just uncomfortable to do this. We are going to do it this time. I take the.
I'd rather take, I'd rather do it one year.
But that's what we're paid to do. We're paid to do what's best for citizens and we need to, so that, that, yes, it would be, it would be, I guess, nice to.
I think it would be terrible.
Raise it 1% and then we would really be good, but.
But if you do it every year, again, you're talking administrative nightmare to have to do that and send out all these informations and back to these factors and then they got to go back to and do everything that they got to, it's administrative nightmare.
So let's do this, Bobby. At the next meeting, you make a, you make a motion to change it to 0.75. I mean, Roland's going to vote for it. I mean, we have to find out. If you make that motion, then we'll find out if there's three people that'll vote for it.
Yeah, but I don't want to waste the time unless we come up with good consensus that, that yes, that we can, that we feel as a finance committee and with Councilman Copeland sitting here, of course, she doesn't have a vote in this, but she can give her input, but I don't want to take anything to the council that doesn't have the support or you all's support and blessing to take to the city council.
So maybe there should be a fourth option, which is removing the cap and then whoever somewhere feels like they want to bring that motion to the council.
Well, I don't know that you're going to get a consensus.
For the cap?
For, oh, but I've.
That's what I meant, just.
That's what I was hoping and that's what these committees for is at least get a consensus.
I think everybody's, I think I speak for all the council.
I don't want, I said this when we, when even during the budget, when we were talking about the 0.25. I don't want to get no more than we have to. I've said that from day one. Now, if, if a consensus would be that we think it's the best interest of the community is to take the cap off, we don't know what that would be, it might bring in more money than we're thinking about. I don't know. I feel, I feel like that, and I don't want to speak for nobody, but Bobby, I like whatever, I want whatever it would take to get the fire department. That was, that was what I'm, what I'm thinking. But a consensus, if at least if we could come up with something that if the cap brings in $300,000, fire department 503, we're going to take two out of the electric, okay? We took two out for numerous of years. I had that thing. We took two out for several years. We took 600 out and I remember a couple times we took 500 out. So we're right, we, we're still right on track if it comes to 200 or 300,000 dollars. We're top of the now, but we're still taking a little out. We shouldn't hurt the electric that much, you know? And the reason I'm saying that I would look at that is the fact that I, and I don't know how to say this. I don't think point, and you know where I've been. I don't think 0.75 is going to fly. And we need to fix the problem. And the only way we're going to fix it is we're going to have to figure out what is the best thing to do. I don't think putting it off and having meetings is an answer.
Well, that's, and that's okay, but I do feel that we do need to come to some type Well, that's, and that's okay, but I, I do feel that we, we do need to come to some type of consensus and we also, I mean, I, I don't see what's wrong with taking, I understand what you're saying. I truly do. But I don't see what's wrong with taking that cap off and seeing what it will generate. Um, since we have been taking that money and, and the paperwork shows that it's been two hundred, two hundred, I think, five hundred, seven hundred at the top. So I, I don't think that we would hurt that much, but that's my thinking, so.
Except during those years, the utility, we have not transferred so much dividend from the utility to the general fund. So the equipment fund is able to sustain that. But this, this budget takes a million and sixty-five thousand dividends over the general fund and we're taking two plus million dollars off of the reserve. So the reserve is, is being depleted in this budget much quicker than any other year it's ever happened.
You're right.
And if we don't do anything this year, it's going to happen again next year possibly. We don't know exactly what the capital funds needs are next year. So we can't just look at the history of it and say, well, we can just keep doing that because again, our dividends this year are much more than they have been in the past.
Let me, in the years that, eight years ago, I think it was, uh, under, correct me if I'm, I think, under Mayor Heaton. I think we took out about two hundred thousand maybe in, in the electric. But I think that's where Jeff Mills was mentioning, where people were furloughed.
Yeah, that was in like two thousand five or six or.
No, that was Dixie five to six. That was, that was, uh, seven.
Seven, eight.
Seven, eight. So there was no raises given. People were furloughed. And, and that was the lowest it's ever been. And I don't, and, and I don't, unless y'all want to do that again, but I don't think that's, I, I don't think that's the way to go. But what we have to remind, and I, and I want to remind you is, is, and I haven't fielded any complaints on this situation from city residents. You have to remind yourself that you're elected by city, city residents, not county people.
I'm thinking of city as well.
Well, just, just want to throw that out there for something to chew on, but, uh, and, and I, and, and the city res, uh, county residents use as much if not more of the resources here in the city. So, uh, you know, uh.
You know, that, that's all well and good and that, that's neither here nor there as far as I'm concerned. I just don't want, I want to.
The amount of resources that are used.
I don't want to raise more money than we need. I want to raise enough. I, I don't think we can just take the cap off. You know, the point two five would, would, would work. That would, that would help the budget and yes, it would, it would make things easier and, and I'm not saying it wouldn't. I just, I don't know, I just, if we, I'd, I'd rather take a little bite this year and a little bite next year, but it sounds like there's no, there's no, nobody else. If we have to just do one thing, well, we need, we need to do the point two five. I, I, but I would rather do, I'd rather do a little bit and then, and then look at it next year. So.
I agree a thousand percent. I don't want no, I don't want, I don't want to build a great big budget, a big, big reserve. We've got good reserves. We, our bondholders make us hold a pretty good reserve. You know, I mean, that, we've, we've got, but I think that, uh.
But something isn't done now, like Councilman Hay, you said, then you wait until next year and then you're going to use a little more than you keep, you keep giving them that. And I, I don't think that's, that's good business.
Well, uh, I think on my piece, I think that when I voted on the budget, my reasoning was for the year that we were going to have to come up with X amount of dollars. Now, it's the same way it depends on the fire department or what country, it doesn't matter, but, uh, that was what was thrown extra in the budget. And that was what I looked at, that I got to figure out how I'm going to come up with this extra money.
Well, if we, if, again, if we do the point six percent, that's six hundred thousand dollars a year extra. Which if we're using a five hundred and seven thousand dollars for the fire department.
It pays for it.
I'm sorry? That, that, that pays for it, if you will. So if, if that's your, you know, that's what I'm saying, Bobby. If, if your philosophy is I want to get enough money to pay the fire department, going from point five to point six percent raises a six hundred thousand dollars a year.
Takes care of it.
That takes care of it. So there's no need to go to the point two five.
But now, but now we're going to get to a three hundred thousand. You're talking about the cap also.
Cap, that's cap is what I.
So we're going to get to a three hundred thousand.
That, that includes that. That, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming about a two hundred thousand dollars by taking the cap off and raising it from point five to point six.
So we don't know what that actually is going to be, do we?
And then you plan on firing how many more fires?
So that's what that, so that's what that six hundred thousand.
What? What they, they would initially like to get to.
It depend, it depends on if, if you get, uh, if you get other factories that are proposing and wanting to come in here and you get those, then you have to, it's like the police. If you get more population of police, you have to add more places. You get more residents, you get more this and that, you have, you're going to have to add.
So with the, the charts that we have, the point seven five, the one percent, um, we were able to look at those numbers. Aren't you able to do what his numbers would be, the point six oh or point seven oh or?
You could.
Could you give us that information?
Well, the point six oh is going to give you ten percent of what you would make. So we got budgeted one point nine.
If, if, was it a hundred, a million nine?
Yeah, a million nine is what we're budgeting.
It's a number, so one percent, you're talking, right? Do you know what you're saying?
And then if you remove the cap, then you have to figure for another ten percent.
Well, let's, let's talk about that, what, what that number would be. And the others are unknown anyhow. And it, it is a million nine, that, that wasn't.
So if you didn't.
So if, if it goes from point five to point six percent, it's about, and, and you take the cap off. And you assume a ten percent premium for the taking the cap off. That's just a note, you know, it's, you know, leave the notes. It's six hundred thousand dollars a year additional if we go from point five to point six. If we go from point five to point seven five, it's over a million dollars. It's nine hundred fifty plus.
Nine hundred fifty thousand.
Plus the two hundred thousand for taking the cap off or something.
But how, how, how are you arriving at two hundred thousand when we don't even know what that would be?
It's, we're assuming a ten percent premium.
Ten percent or without doing anything to the tax rate would be about a hundred eighty, so you just round it up just to give it a balance.
You're talking about if you take the cap off?
You take just the cap off.
Well, I'm rounding it up because I'm adding the two percent. I'm adding, I'm adding the, I'm going from point five to point six and then adding the two percent.
Okay, so that's, that's where you get this. Okay, you're losing on that. I was like, how do you get them up?
Okay. So, so that.
What do you think about that, if I might ask?
Well, it, it is better than, without having a, a surplus, it's better than the point seven five for, for this. I mean, I, I totally understand what you're saying.
Well, Keisha, if you could live with that, I can live with that. And if Bobby can live, can at least consider that because it, again, it's six hundred thousand dollars and using your, your, your philosophy on raising enough for the fire department. I mean, there's no sense, I mean, point two five is something that somebody picked because every city does it in four percent. But we don't have to. I mean, we'd be odd, all, but. And, and we could, I mean, I want to look at it next year.
Well.
Looking at it every year, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm cautioning you guys on that. Of course, again, it's, it's you as a council's decision, but I caution you on doing this every year. It is.
Well, we won't know. We don't, we won't know.
Well, I, I've stated where I was and everybody here stated where they were. I could do a lot of studying on what you said.
Okay.
I could, I could, uh, I can just.
I mean, I'm Tracy.
So you're going to bring in six hundred eight thousand if you only bring it to point six oh percent and removing the cap?
Yeah.
That's total. Okay, I thought you were saying six hundred thousand plus.
That's what I thought you were saying.
That's why I had to.
No, you're talking about six hundred.
Six hundred eight thousand.
You're talking six hundred thousand or whatever total.
I rounded to six hundred because you really don't know what the.
That's fine. I just took the six hundred thousand as the reason of that.
Point one percent.
It goes from one point nine to two point five away.
And you put question, question, question. It's like, it was, you don't know what the.
I just had.
Cap on it, yeah.
Are you shaking? Bobby, you were, you didn't finish the thought of anything?
I'll get some more numbers on it.
Okay. And Tracy has all that. I mean, she can help.
And I, I should have brought them. Sorry. I think we're in a position that we're. And I'm probably the biggest advocate using the general, uh, electric or, or utilities of anybody in the room.
That's probably fair.
But I don't want a bankrupt. I mean, uh, you know.
Would you be a proponent of just using the electric and not the water in the sewer? Because sewer, actually, it's maybe break even this year. Water, we have a big two million project, two million dollar project coming up in that.
Well, all of our utilities, in my opinion, as I've said many, many times, it's, it's, we're there to give the people service and we want to give them cheap service. We want to give them the best of what we can put about it. Now, if, uh, if, it doesn't matter to me where it comes from. The guards didn't make any. We, we spend a lot of water and sewer, so if not, I'm doing that, so what you're saying.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of the accounting part of it because when it comes to having to borrow money for a project, if the water doesn't have enough to do it, then you're going to have to borrow money and then you have to look at the water rates because you have to think about the money that you're going to use and then you have to pay that money back. And the only, the only way to pay that money back is that's when you start to do a rate study to find out if you need to increase your rates.
One way usually is how much water we need, that, but now, uh, we, if, if, uh, we need, again, whether we need it on the water, whether we need it by a garbage truck or whatever we need comes out the general.
Comes out of it.
Comes out.
By utility, because you don't want your utility, you don't want one utility to drain the other one.
Well, I don't think it will, but that, that's, that's discussion, but, uh, I'm for using I guess you want to call it the unrestricted, is that good? If you want to call it electric, I, it seemed like it upsets them when I called it electric, but.
Well, it's, yeah, it's.
It doesn't matter wherever it's coming from. We've done it. I, I was reading here the other, I've read, just reading one of Dixie's books. They started the electric in eighteen ninety-five. They borrowed seven thousand dollars to start the electric business. And they made their first, uh, uh, light, uh, the ninety-six, I think it was. And at that time, it was talked about using the, the profits for.
It's also residents who are electric.
But, they're back then, so I, I still, I think we can use that. I've been, I think it's, and now, I don't want to bankrupt them. I don't want to have to raise, you and I said, we don't want to have to raise our electric rate to knock something off over here. But I still think, I don't want her, I mean, I want her to have good service. If we need to build a line to it, we need to do it. We need to keep her happy. But now.
Just bury my table and I'm sitting out in my backyard.
But she, but she don't need, she don't, she don't need, don't need a whole bunch of money laying there. And with that said, I'm willing to, uh, uh, look at anything for you. The reason I, and I'm, I'm just giving you poor Bobby's example of this thing now. We, we had three options. We had this looking here, we had this option here, this option here. And the twenty-five percent, what it was talked about, all through the budget process. And I felt that was the one to go because one, two, three, which one are you going to go? Well, now I'm there. But I know we got to operate and I'm willing to look at it and if you want to call it a compromise or whatever you want to call it, we can find a medium to feel where we can live and we got to.
But as Craig was saying, this would cover the extra in the general fund and then you'd be right back here next year talking about it. Or maybe, did you say not next year, but the year after?
Well, it could be next year if we, depends on when we, when we craft the budget next year in April, let's say. And we see how many, how many streets do we want to pave? What, what kind of raises are we going to have? Are we, what's, I mean, how many police groups do we, you know, once, once the budget's crafted, then we can say, okay, this, if we, if we had done this, okay, that's going to get us through next year. But if it costs us another two million dollars out of our, uh, utility fund, maybe not because we just, that's why I said, we can't just keep eating that money. You get a point and maybe twelve million's enough, but is eight million? I don't, maybe not because we have these other. So, but we could look at that next year, but that would require us to be open to revisiting our tax structure next year. And I'll say this, if there's no other person who's willing to do that on the council, it sounds like there's two here that aren't you, then I'll be honest, I would, I would be hesitant to just take the, to go to point six because I'm afraid that might not be.
But let me, but let me interject this. Whether you like the sidewalk deal or whatever, or how you want to look at that. But if you want to say it's a surplus or extra money, every, what terminology you want to use on that. But we are years behind in paving in our streets. We have major, is that not correct?
Well, Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a pitch. This is my, uh, monthly pitch for a long-term plan. We had a written long-term plan and we had all of our sidewalks laid out and all of our streets laid out. And we could just open a book and say, yeah, these streets need paving, these sidewalks need fixing. Here's what it costs, okay? But we, if we would ever get to that.
Well, I'm, I'm on, I'm getting on that right now.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm getting on that right now because myself and the risk management, uh, risk management Greg Asworth took a day. We've measured a tremendous amount. Only a fraction of the sidewalks that, that have been evaluated and says they have to be replaced immediately. Just a word of caution. And he, and, and they, and they have to be done because hazardous. We have a Indian trail that's off of a Spring Hill subdivision. That street is total felon. The head wall's gone. Total major construction there. So if you want to say that, well, I'm scared to have extra or surplus or whatever. We have projects. We have a project, the street projects that has to be done. Well, they have to be repaved. If we're not, we're losing, every, every year that goes by, if you, and I don't think anybody here has ever put in a street, but I have, but every year that goes by that that street has cracked and broke and gets water infiltration through the street, continue to fail. It goes even further. The more damage it, the longer you let it fail, the more damage it does and then more cost it's going to be. Don't think that it's just going to be there to be put in a bank. My intention, you know, you're, and Larry and Jessica and, and Greg is working on that and I'm going to bring it to you, to show you. We measure probably close to over, over five hundred feet plus just in sidewalks just to be done. And it's so.
Mayor, that gets back to what Keisha's talking about, the information. And if, okay, here's why we, here's why we think in next year's budget, not this budget, this budget's done. In next year's budget, rather than having five hundred thousand dollars in, uh, street repairs, we think we should do X number of dollars and we, and therefore, that's, that's the need that we're planning for. That's what, because what we do now really doesn't kick in till a year from now and that's what we're anticipating. And that's, if, if, if that's the information we have, that's the information we need to receive.
And Jessica has that and then that long-turning plan, that was before you left council, that long-term planning is still there, which has a lot of.
And Jessica has that. And in that long-term plan, that was before you left council, that long-term planning is still there, which has a lot of streets to be blacked up. She has a list. So I'll get that information to you. It'll help you make your, it'll help you make your mind up on this. Because it's not just work that doesn't have to be done. This is work that has to be done. Has to.
Bobby, did you say you were going to look at this a little bit more?
Well, yeah, I'll think about it, but. I don't know. It, it. I think we need to, I think our discussion too tonight was. Different, I guess. A lot of different issues brought up and I listened to all of them. And with what I gathered, or what my conclusion was, first off, I don't, I, I don't think we've, we've got enough to pass any type of increase. Because I would say several of us want environmental, some of us are thinking of the future and some of us are, I don't know where they're thinking. And I don't see that we're any better off right now, when this meeting is over, to. Put it on the floor. I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't know. I mean, I, I understand your situation. I'm, I just told you, I'm willing to. I'm willing to vote, but we got to have some kind of direction of, you know. I don't know where we're at. To be quite frank with Fred, I, I mean, yeah, I'll look and I'm real, I mean that. But it's going to take at least three votes to tie it. The mayor changes.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I, I'm not sure that I see that on. I don't, I don't.
Do you all see it? Do you all, I, I don't know that I do.
So, I need to speak now.
Can you invite her to speak?
Huh? I did? I've, I guess I've asked Jess to come back and, and speak about street roads and just to give you a brief, not in depth, no numbers. Just kind of stress what I'm talking about, to see where we are, so.
Well, let's want to take a little recess till Bobby gets back.
Mayor, I have to ask, there's nothing about streets and roads on the special agenda, is that?
That is in the, that's, I'm tying that in with the occupational license and the, and the use of that money. And that's part of that discussion into the.
Right.
.75, the, the.
Right.
Yeah.
Mayor, another question while we're in recess.
Yeah.
What's, what's the breakdown on sidewalk repairs? How much of the home property owner is responsible for the repairs?
Well, under the current ordinance right now, it's, it's almost like a 50-50 deal. But we're, right now, we're in discussion about of what, how much work, extent of the work does the city want to do? You know, because some people can and cannot.
Right.
And, and some of the sidewalks are in, in such dire need of repair. You know, and then the cost, can they, can they afford it? Can they, and some of those, we just, some of the sidewalks, we can't wait. To say that lightly. And I, I would ready to go again. I've kind of brought Jessica back here and I've asked her to speak, which I'm allowed to do, to kind of give you an insight on streets and sidewalks. So if you'll be very brief and then you can go and, because I know you're, she's in the middle of doing a report or getting a report together.
Yeah, I'm actually working on the, the street resurfacing list right now. We've been riding around trying to evaluate and kind of rank the streets in various neighborhoods all throughout town. And we, at the time, we're kind of evaluating section, trying to figure where to start, where to stop, which is where, trying to make all those comparisons. And I'm in the process of getting all the tonnage quantities together to figure out what gets to stay on my list for this current fiscal year. What would maybe go to if there's extra monies that came available, you know, that have the same priority and then something that, and kind of create the ones that we've kind of ranked for 2017, there's, you know, 2016, 17 budget that could wait another year. So that's what I'm kind of in the process of doing and what I'm, what I'm learning is that some of the streets that are long, say Parkway Drive, that get a lot of traffic from our industry, they get a lot of, you know, truck to trailer traffic and a lot of employee traffic. And even cut through commuters from Woodlong Road to US 150. Those streets, even though they are a substantial pavement section, they just get a lot of traffic and I'm already in need of repaving some of those sections. That's, when you look at mileage, that's a lot of mileage or footage and your money doesn't go as far when it's time to do those. So I've got several kind of like that large section, the third street needs to be done, almost the whole thing. We've got a predominant section of Blountville Pike that needs to be done. So large sections and some of, and even just wider sections, you know, Parkway's wide. Parts of Third Street are wide, you know, where we have the on-street parking and so forth that extends, it's 45 feet wide for several hundreds of feet. So I'm in the process of kind of getting a good evaluation of where we are today, what's on my list, and seeing where we're, where we're going to come out with, with the current monies that we've got allocated versus kind of how much it would take to get us, at least with the, yeah, priority, priority one, priority one streets. But there's still some that, you know, again, we're just kind of ranking as we're driving around and but going back and comparing with, when was the last time it was paved? Is it holding up? Is it not holding up? So we're kind of making those eval, making those evaluations right now. And we're also kind of looking at sidewalks. Haven't had a lot of time to go out and look at those personally myself, but I know Greg Ashworth has been walking those and trying to evaluate the trip houses along with the mayor. So they're kind of getting those lists of the surveyed areas. So again, we're just trying to focus on certain grids at a time because it does take, take time to go do that type of detailed work and take the picture and measure and see what's going on with them.
How, how long have you been here?
Five years.
Five years. And when you started, how far behind were they on streets?
That's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to say because we did, we tried to get a certain amount, you know, generally it was based on a dollar amount permitted for the street department. And over time, since I've been here, asphalt has gone up. I'm hoping this year with gas prices as they come down, I'm going to get a little better price. But it generally doesn't come down more than a dollar or two, but it's probably gone up. Oh goodness, even just, and I have some charts from some previous committee meetings that I'd be welcome to, yeah, welcome to share with you. That showed just over the last 10 years, how the price of asphalt has doubled, but, you know, your, your funding and then you've got more responsibility, more streets annexed in the last 10, 15 years. So there is kind of this balancing act. And then just more community, traffic people, you know, more, the more people are driving on streets, heavier loads, it's just harder on the streets. So sometimes it's not as strict a year, you know, we paved Chivers Boulevard probably five years ago, but it's already showing signs, then it needs it again just within five years. So it won't, it's not on this year's list, but I'd say in the next year or two, it's going to need to be, need to be paved again. So, and there's some streets that can go, that's why it's a hard thing to just say all streets this amount of years because some streets can go 15 to 20 years because they may be on cul-de-sac, there might be five houses about there, there's not heavy traffic on them. They get, they see the weekly garbage truck and, and that's about it, you know, just the normal traffic and the snow pile. So there's lots of different factors, you know, on how long the street's going to, going to hold up.
I, I totally understand what you're saying and, and I, I think some of this goes back to long-term planning, having something to look at and making someone accountable, hey, did we, where are we at with this? Because when you don't have anything to look at, you don't know where you're going. And most companies or corporations always have a plan. And if you don't follow that plan, then somebody's going to be in trouble. And I just see where, that's why I asked you when you came on, you know, how far behind were we? Where were we within that 12-year range of streets and things of that nature? But if we don't have, and I, I'm for that, it has to be done. It has, you need something concrete on paper. And, and to be able to look back and say, okay, this is where we're at. We didn't get here. Why? Why didn't we get here? It was because, well, rates were this, or we just, we didn't have the funding. But we need to know why. And, and I don't even know if, if, you know, if we're saying, and I'm not against sidewalks, you know, that, that's a safety hazard. But that could always be an issue then. You're always going to need money. And I, I just, I truly feel that if we're going to use, we need to use the money for what we said we were going to use it for. I just.
Well, Jessica, and I appreciate you coming, Jessica, but Jessica's, and Greg and I and Larry Hamilton are working up on those set fact figures. And I'm going to, and I'm going to have, hopefully soon I'll get those ready and I'm going to present those to you. And, and how we got there is because I don't think, and Bobby's been on long, I've been on, what, 15 years? You've been on 15? And it's just because it's never been adequate funding and you just didn't get there.
You just do the best you can with what you have and prioritize what's the most pressing things generally.
I'm going to make a recommendation that I can do, I can make a motion if we talk to this. Let's, why don't we do this? I said at the beginning, you know, as far as, I didn't want to get too much ahead of ourselves. And we've talked about, and we've talked about needs. I would like for us to make a recommendation that we allow the mayor's staff to develop this information and present it back to the council of the Tracy River, that here's what we, here's what's on the books. Here's why, here's what, here's what our needs are going to be for the next year, let's say. Next year's budget, we already have a pretty good idea, sidewalks, streets. If there's something in the fire department, if there's something in the police department, if there's something in the garbage area, we need another garbage truck. So look at these so that we can see, okay, here's where these funds would go in comparison, you know, this budget versus next year's budget. And then I think, I think we would all feel better about the decision we made if we had some of this information. And we still have some time to just to do this. I mean, we, I don't know if you have it done by Tuesday, the working session, or maybe the next, September the 8th, which is our next regular session. And get more information, I don't think we're going to come to a consensus on rate, but maybe we can come to a consensus on, let's get more of this information so we can revisit that.
We've been working on that all week.
So you want long-term planning for all the apartments, not just streets?
Well, especially to the, to the extent that it affects the budget, you know, and that it has a, a major impact on the budget.
Well, right now.
And what, what do you think, Bobby? Would that, could we, would you go along with that?
Right now, she, you know, she is overwhelmed with her other duties. Right now, I've asked her to be focused on sidewalks and streets. There is a big sewer project that you.
I've got a list of about 15 things to do.
Right, but I'm just saying.
And there's always four more that come up and then they get pushed back, so.
A lot of times you can look at the budget and pile the list of five years from now. I think that's in the back of each apartment.
We have that.
And all that together.
So I can get that. But what I've asked her to do right now is to work on streets and sidewalks.
And that would help with what Keisha's talking about, you know, once we bring that out in the council meeting and it's kind of published and it's, that's more information for people to see. So with that, I'll make a recommendation that we, we take back to the council on a motion, that we take to the council, the recommendation that we allow the mayor's staff to develop some information on some long-term plans so that we can better evaluate our needs for funding for the next seven years.
Thank you, Jessica. All in favor? Motion's approved to do that.
Is that an electric truck in there?
Want to dig it up?
Oh, I thought it was an electric.
No, it's a digger truck.
Is it the digger truck? Okay.
You know, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll move. Move to adjourn.
Second.